Bill's here somewhere.
There we go. I think we're good to go.
Alright, so we've officially called it over. Everybody look at the minutes? It looked great to me.
Yeah?
And make a motion to accept.
Okay.
And? Any general discussion? Anyone on the world wide web? Just us?
Us and Bill.
Okay. No, uh? No general discussions, so I think it's old business? What is our old business? River Road Athletic Complex Project?
So I was hoping Carl would be on to give us an update.
What update do you think? That he's getting closer to request for proposal?
Ready to go end of January, I think Stu's been saying.
That's what Stu said.
So I'll check in, I'll check in with Carl tomorrow and get an update and I can all forward it out to everybody in the email chain.
Are we all kinda on the same page with the fact that he's gonna put a drawing of the pickleball court on the latest prints? Not make it part of this ARPA funding, but make it a separate project, a CIP and ASK simultaneously? Yeah, something like that.
How much is extra the pickleball court?
I think we've got it. It's forty, it's around forty grand, I believe, so.
Do we, if we're not, you don't think it makes sense to incorporate into whatever whoever's doing the other?
We are, that's. But it has to be separate, Eddie, because it's separate money.
Two separate bids, but they're gonna bid them together.
That's great, okay. It's gonna be popular, because that pickleball is sweeping the country like crazy.
Yeah.
I mean, you know, you see it on TV now, you know?
I'm looking, I wanna say after basketball is done with their practices in March, I'm gonna try and get a weekly program going back at the school like it's been done in the past.
It'll be popular. Indoors is popular.
Yeah.
They have an indoor where we have a place up north and people are waiting in line as soon as the kids get out of school to go in and play. And it's popular.
I seen playing on a window, freezing cold.
Yeah?
Twelve o'clock.
I don't have that kind of enthusiasm. That's a bit much.
We're doing indoor, right? Indoor at the whole school?
In March, yeah, March is, I'm thinking.
Oh, I didn't see that yet.
No, once we're cleared up, because basketball, all the practices from.
It's still going?
Yeah, we've got, youth has two games left plus playoffs. High school has probably six weeks, six, seven weeks left.
What, um, what's the timing? Do we have any timing on, on the River Road though? But the approval's not yet.
We're waiting for an RFP.
Alright.
And that's Carl putting it together. He has all the information he needs. I'm sure he swamped. I don't know how big his shop is, but. You know?
Yeah, I'll, I'll shoot him the email and hopefully next week he'll have things ready to go, but.
Then my thought is before it goes out to bid, shouldn't we all look at it?
Sure.
Good idea.
Yeah.
I think it would.
You mean the RFP?
Yeah. Just to see what is, you know, what he is requesting. And I think, what's our allotment?
Two twenty, I believe, yeah. I think that was the most recent thing I saw.
October's gonna run about a hundred, it's two hundred?
Carl thinks it's gonna eat up all of that.
Really? Biggest by far of any of the other ARPA things that I was seeing.
Well, it'll fix it once and for all, and that's a popular spot.
Yeah, yeah, the whole town uses it, so it's a good thing.
I mean, I saw kids playing basketball recently, you know, in the cold, but it was still, the light was on. Wasn't late, but it was.
We've got, the lights are off now. I had my guys disconnect.
Yeah, it must've been right before you did that, but.
And you do have a fourth camera at River Road now.
Oh, that's great.
You know what we should do? I know this is a little off topic, but it's still River Road. Um, there's fiber in town now. It would, that would be a great thing to see if we could get an internet connection down there. Not for wifi, just for you to have access to those cameras.
And get it on the website somehow?
And so you'd be downloading at a gig.
Yeah.
That's plenty of bandwidth.
Now, would it come, would it go directly online? Would it have to cut, like, route it through my computer and then?
We'd probably have to pay for a service to get it online, or we might be able to do it with a DYN DNS account, you know, make like a sticky.
Yeah.
Kind of internet account? So it makes us, like, so it makes it like a sticky IP that does, like, your IP changes all the time at home?
Yes, yeah.
So you can pay for a static IP address, or you can do a DYN DNS, and usually companies like the company that built those cameras will provide you one for free.
Gotcha.
So we could do something like that, and then you're, when you have your online camera, you know, like click here for camera, it'll just point at that. Um, connection, that link.
Yeah, okay, yeah.
Then we just have, well, there, none of the cameras have PTZ, so it's just four fixed frames. So you can choose one camera, just let that camera rip.
Yeah.
Maybe the one that looks out at the field.
I can address changes.
So if you go home and get on a computer, you know where a computer is? Get on a computer, you type in, what's my IP? It'll give you your, your IP address at the house. Then a week later, type it in again, it's probably different. It sticks for a while, but it'll, it changes. Unless you pay for it to be static.
Thing I don't know.
Feel better now knowing.
Where's it in encyclopedia?
Damn, it's online. So have you been talking to Carl at all about this?
Uh, Stu, Stu's going back and forth and I'll, you know, send Carl a random email, checking in, but I'll, I'll send one probably tomorrow, seeing where he's at.
That's a great idea. Just be a constant reminder.
Yeah, emails get that thing going, you know?
Yeah.
Plus, we've had so much rain lately, it just makes sense to fix it.
The guys that are in that business are looking for spring projects?
Yeah.
So now is when they're bidding them.
Yeah.
So we're gonna want that as soon as possible. Alright, I like that. Any other discussions on River Road?
Uh, so, planning a zoning approval, is that gonna be straightforward?
I think we're okay, so they weren't worried about the lights, so we don't need, uh, we don't have to ask anybody's permission to get a variance.
You said we didn't have any wetlands?
No wetlands, right?
This has no PZ, no PMZ approval.
Oh, no PMZ.
Why, yeah. Yeah, because Stu sent that in, in the email.
No wetlands for the RV work, they might have to hold. You know? To push dirt on?
Yeah, they'll have to take some kind of affirmative. We're gonna have to be cognizant of them being there and, you know, there's people there.
Yeah, they're gonna, yeah, they're gonna try to put up barriers, obviously.
And we're gonna have to block off wherever they're working. Where they are.
Post, post pliers, put it up on the bulletin board.
Maybe have its art department, public works, set up some, you know, caution tape.
That might, that might be on the RFP, part of the RFP.
Probably.
Silk containment and blah, 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 whatever.
But we're gonna wanna get eyes on it too, to see how the contractors doing it, you know?
Make sure.
Contractors. They get away with what they can whenever they can, and then people forget.
What, what, uh, what's going on though with the, um? The volleyball court, is it still just gonna be volleyball for now? Because we, we have to think of what we're gonna do with that down the road, because it's just not being utilized for that at all.
I think for now it stays sand volleyball.
I know, but let's think of what else we can do.
Because we gotta put a fence around the, the, the court.
For pickleball.
For pickleball, so I don't think you want that in the middle of everything.
Right.
It's down on the end. Maybe you can try and get, maybe you can do some sand volleyball. Get something going. Maybe make it a, I can't see college kids not wanting to play volleyball. Volleyball's popular. UConn has a great volleyball team.
Yeah.
I don't know, we'll see.
What else is going on at River Road?
So Chris and I went over, uh, was it last week? Either early this, late last week? Last week at some point, um, and we tried to get that fence back in ourselves. We went at it with pliers and. Wasn't successful. We weren't able to bend it back, so I'm gonna get with Troy with Public Works and I'm gonna get a new. Ring, I don't know the exact name, but it got bent, I guess whenever it got knocked over, so we're gonna replace that and then that fence will be good to go.
Cool.
Back into place, um.
Where's that fence? In left field there?
Right field.
Right?
Right field, yeah. Um, I went over today, it's super icy. I don't know, should I get like sand to put out, or is it? Use it your own risk more?
You mean on the walking path?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think if you put salt on it, it's just gonna melt right through and freeze again.
Rain Wednesday, whatever you're gonna do on.
Yeah. I think people are at their own risk if they're at River Road.
Yeah. That's, that's worried about.
What about the, um, the walking path itself? It seems like, I think that gravel mixture, whatever it is, not gravel, but whatever it is, sort of getting worn out.
Yeah, I thought it got replaced not too long ago.
That's what I thought. It got replaced, but was it recently or?
Yeah, like three years ago, maybe? I don't think, I think our guys did it, right? Town guys? Mike? Did we pay somebody?
Uh, I think we paid somebody.
Well, they're gonna do all this new construction. That means whatever they dig up is gonna be all fresh.
Yeah.
So maybe they can take some of the stuff they take off and put it in spots that are crummy, but.
Alright, we'll see, we'll check it out.
I guess if there's a pile that they pull up, Department of Public Works could always relocate some of that pile to the soft spots.
I walked down there a few times in the last month or so. It didn't seem like there was any areas that were.
Alright.
I think maybe to the right of, if you're looking at the bill, the bulletin board from the parking lot, there's a, one of the green. I, boxes there, and I think it might be poking through, but that's the only spot I can think of. Maybe somewhere where the water is running down, it corrodes on the.
Yeah.
Side of the bad drainage.
Is there a bad spot on the walking path where you're talking about, where people are stepping on the box? It's right in the middle of the path?
I think it comes up a little bit. It's not like jutting up, you know, five, six inches, but maybe like.
See the lid?
Yeah.
It's not right in the center. I think it's started to the side.
To the side, yeah.
Okay.
Not a trip hazard.
Yeah.
That's poor planning, huh?
I didn't know, that fire in advance.
Didn't know. Didn't know.
Alright.
Alright. What else on River Road?
I'll, I'll wait until my, my spiel for, for my River Road stuff.
Okay, then new business, budget preparations.
So I have the budget stuff. I'm getting to work on that. Um, came out a couple hours ago, so I might be calling for advice at some point. Um, but I'm, I'm gonna work with Donna and get things started on that. I'm presenting February first is my presentation date.
Okay.
Um, so any advices appreciated dealing with.
Mike is a CPA, so he could probably answer anything you got questions on.
I own a pencil.
I am terrible with reading that budget. It's so.
Me too.
You too? But that's, I mean, I, I know you're an attorney, but still, you look at more paperwork than I do. I just, I don't understand it.
If, if I am reading it right, my quick little once-over, um. It looks like revenues looking pretty good, uh, compared to last year. But I will get more confirmation before I officially confirm that.
What's the word on the street? Do they want you to maintain your budget, reduce it?
Um. Uh, maintain. Board of Finances requesting that any increases over the current fiscal year are explained specifically and in writing. Please be detailed in your explanation if the increases are equal to or greater than ten percent in a line item, as well as any staffing or program service changes that impact your budget request.
Well, we have, we, didn't we pay some ten grand out of pocket? So is that gonna be a ten grand increase in our, I think so, asking?
I don't know if that's for this year or next year. So I, uh, wow, I'm not even sure we talked to about that.
Well, I think, right, his current salary is being subsidized by the President General Fund.
I believe so.
So that means the budget he's gonna present, it's gonna have to show.
He probably needs to have that in.
That's gonna be over ten percent probably.
Oh, yeah. What's our budget?
Ten out of fifty, ten out of eighty.
So.
It's two budgets. It's your funding plus the regular town budget, but.
Donna said in the email, she sent an email out.
Five or eighteen percent, six percent.
So usually I would enter the salary increases for you in your salary line items. However, this is a negoti- negotiation year, and since we do not know the increase at this time, I've left all the salaries flat and will budget for an increase in the contingency line. Um, I'll move the money to your budget via budget transfer after we know the amount needed for each employee. So I think she's waiting on.
You're not a union member, are you?
No.
No.
Okay. So that's not me.
Finally get that straightened out.
Yes.
Alright, I'll check with Donna and see what she has to say about that.
Yeah, I'm gonna send myself an email and I will talk to somebody.
Well, we used, we had to use part, part of our. Savings account.
General, our fund, yeah.
Our, yeah, to fund a portion of your salary, because the Board of Finance requested that we pony up some money. We had a bit, we had a. Big pile of cash, basically. We had to do something with it, so they made us pay some more salary.
Gotcha.
So we're obviously not gonna be able to afford that every year.
Yeah.
So at some point it's gonna have to be adjusted to the budget, which is gonna.
Be now.
Gonna be an increase for our budget.
Gotcha.
Yep.
So who, who is that? Donna that? Is Donna Latinsick?
Yeah.
Hopefully it won't be, at, at home, hopefully it won't meet the ten percent criteria and we won't have to give you enough to make a huge.
Yeah.
It'd be a simple letter. Here's what happened and here's what, here's the new way it's gonna be paid.
I don't think it's gonna be a surprise to anybody.
Alright. Sent myself a reminder. I know that budget is, isn't, isn't there a new software system for it this year, I thought?
I don't know if it came last year or this year, but I have.
It's just as messy. It looks the same way.
Yeah, Excel, revenue, Excel, expenses.
Okay.
I think typically what we, what usually happened was just took the one from the year before, and if you knew you needed more money in a certain, you just added some, takes them away.
Gotcha, because there's some things, the, the one thing that we went, that I went a little over on was the. Uh, porta potties at River Road, because I wanted the two, two on each end, one handicap for the concerts in, into the summer. So that's. I think that'd be the only big question that they have.
We spent more than you expected?
Yeah, yeah.
How much do they run us a year roughly? Or if you don't know.
Do we have a line item for that, though?
Yes.
It's so big too.
Toilet facility, I know, so last year was budgeted eighteen hundred, it went to, uh, thirty-two fifty, so I think they kinda. Expect that much, um.
Build a couple outhouses.
Who's gonna clean those, Eddie?
You don't have to.
Handicap and the handicap. You have one handicap and two regular ones?
One handicap, one regular, one on each, each side. I think that, you know, if we do have some handicap participants there. They wouldn't fit in the, the solid one.
Definitely not, so couldn't get in.
I wonder what the usage is. Maybe we could just get away with the one handicap.
Right, I was just saying the same thing.
The, the, I got a complaint though at the start of the concerts, how there wasn't.
Oh.
People walking back.
They had to walk an extra five feet.
Yeah.
What do you mean, wait, say that again, what?
They were complaining because they, they had to walk from a, a, a far distance to get to the porta potty.
There's just one by the commuter lot and one by the entry.
Yeah, but I think what Mike was saying is if instead of getting two and two, just use the handicap.
Yeah, yeah, that's, I mean.
I mean, handicap.
We don't wanna put it in the middle of the park.
Oh, because the smell.
Two handicaps.
Right, definitely partly the smell.
Use two handicaps instead of four, four.
He's not using four, you've only got two total.
Two, two total.
Oh, okay.
One handicap on one end, one regular on the other end. That's what I had for the summer.
So, well, typically, uh, the most usage is gonna be near the pavilion, obviously.
Yes, yeah.
So if you put it, put it at the, at the beginning of the park, soccer can use it, who's, there's a lot of soccer players, there's, uh, the concerts. Playground, people are there for twenty minutes.
Yeah.
Didn't need them all, yeah, didn't need it all the way down to the other end, I don't know, I mean.
He did it to help people because they were complaining. I think you probably need to have two there, if you think about it. You have fifty to a hundred kids there for soccer?
Well, we might be able to go more seasonal, like, uh, during soccer season, you have two during.
I think what I'll end up doing is I'll start with, like, one handicap by the entrance, and then depending on the need, what I'm hearing as I'm there, add. A second at the other end, a regular one if needed.
Yeah.
So that, that's my plan going in.
I don't know if it's cheaper though. You might wanna check and see if it's cheaper to just get it for a season rather than paying it by a week.
Yeah.
Might be more expensive to, might be cheaper to get three months out of it instead of only two weeks.
Yeah.
I don't know how they rent them out.
I don't know.
They would steal them.
They're mostly used by people.
Your own video.
They're used by people driving by. I don't see a lot of people there using them, but.
Yeah. I bet they get some use during soccer.
Somebody, I will say, one, obviously had heavy use that needed some extra cleanings in the, in the summer.
Oh, that's not good.
So.
From a lot of visits or someone that just was not nice?
A lot of visits, I'd say.
That's the other problem too, is if you only have one at a concert and it's.
It's dirty.
Inoperable for whatever reason.
You're out of luck.
You don't have a backup.
I think, I don't know what the rules and codes are, but they usually say it's good for ten people on a site a week. That's for construction, right?
Oh, yeah, they probably have, yeah, depending on when they service it, you can go with more servicing.
But we're on a job site where there's fifty people a day there, there's eight porta potties.
But I mean, they could be, they could service it once a week, whereas you could say, hey, no, I need service every two days.
I think it's based on how many people can use them all at once.
No.
So, I, I don't think we're under that. I don't think for us that counts.
There's no way.
But, but, two is not a bad idea, if we can afford it, we'll keep in the budget.
Play it by ear and see, see what the usage is looking like and I'll keep everyone in the loop.
Are you gonna engage that with a broomstick?
Yardstick, come on.
That's gross.
This camera.
There is a limit to what you should and should not do on this job. That's above.
Technically Norfolk has more gross tonnage.
Alright, what else you got?
Alright, so, uh, I think that's it for budget. I'll, uh, I'll reach out if I have any additional questions with that, but I, I think I should be good.
Okay.
So, directors report time?
Lay it on us.
Alright, so.
Good news only, yeah.
Uh, thirteen signups so far for the email newsletter that I, I, uh, sent it out a week ago now, so I'm, I'm happy. I, I was expecting. Three or four, but thirteen's pretty good.
That's for you to, to email out the newsletter?
Yes, monthly. I got people's emails and I'm thinking program start dates, updates, just a one, one-page thing right in the body of the email to keep people updated. Um, so I'm looking to get that out.
You're not doing like, uh, Amazon and all those other companies, where you're just hammering your ad out there regardless?
Not once a month, one, once a month, um, and then although I did put a section in there, would you like to be emailed outside the once a month for, um, special project?
Sure.
Special update.
But I mean, you're asking for signups. Couldn't you just take everybody that's in your system and just bam, just send it?
Yeah, I, I wanted to get the consent first, because I, I felt like just sending it out like that might be, people might get upset, getting their email filled up.
Oh. I don't know, I spend half an hour a day deleting emails.
I, I, I can't do that too. I'll just throw everybody in, but.
About me.
Do what you want.
Thirteen, thirteen so far for that. Um, so I have been named the head of the Tricentennial Celebration Committee.
Welcome to Wellington.
You've never arrived.
You have to run it to say, no.
Thank you for volunteering.
Wow.
When is that tricentennial?
May twenty twenty-seven.
What's it called again?
Tricentennial Celebration Committee, uh, along with Bob Shabbitt, Mark Palmer. Joan, Joan, Teres, Tereskiwitz, I butchered that, and Phil Monty so far. That's who's on the committee. Um, I went to the Board of Finance meeting on last Thursday and I advocated for the use of the cannabis tax funds to be used to fund the celebration.
Good for you.
So, uh, there's, I think there's one of, it's community and civic engagement is one of the six things that that money can be used for, so. Uh, we're advocating to be used for the celebration. Um, I'll update as we get more info. We're still a ways out, but.
So what, what's the plan? What are you guys doing? Having a party in the park?
This, we haven't had a meeting yet. I was named Ted a week ago.
See what happens when you miss a meeting and maybe.
Don't get sick.
You get the hot spot. Um, we're, we're looking to have our first meeting, uh, second week of March, so I think we'll have more concrete, uh. Concrete plans than hopefully.
Are you gonna dress up like Jared Sparks for the party?
So I, I went to, I went to River, when Chris and I went to River Road, we were talking about it, we could have a rev- a Revolutionary War reenact.
Yes.
In the woods.
Alright.
So.
When is the tricentennial again?
May of twenty twenty-seven.
Three years.
So three years out.
I mean, it sounds like it'd just be another Wellington day, really.
Yeah.
I mean, what are you gonna do? You know what I'm saying? But it should be more informative, but why don't you include, come, you guys do what you want. I'm saying you could combine it into the two together, because, you know, the people get.
Uh, party down?
You know, party, uh, weary, you know, just another one, another one, another one.
This is only every hundred years, though.
Whatever.
You won't be around for the next one.
No.
But you were there for.
He was there for the first two. I may not be around for the next one.
Oh, don't even talk like that.
No.
I think, you know what would be a great thing? To get the kids in school involved and maybe have them write essays about the town or the history of the town, and then, you know, you could have a competition of some sort.
I was thinking, again, you know, the historical society heavily involved, Bob will definitely help with that, and then. My, what I, my first initial thought was maybe instead of just doing a one-day celebration, space it out and, you know, one day at the Glazer Tavern, learn about the history, one day at the Old Town Hall. Events there, one day at River Road, so I'm sure we'll settle on something in the couple of years we have to plan out, but.
Yeah, that's a great idea.
I think, I think it'll work out. It'll be a good time. Um, so Chris and I came up with, um. So what I did last summer was when somebody rented the pavilion, I put a sign up the day of saying pavilion reserved. Uh, we came up with a QR code. That we're gonna post up and you'll be able, it'll, we haven't published the page yet, but you can scan it and it'll take you to a page on the website. Um, that's got a calendar along with all the forms you need to reserve, so I'm hoping that way, you know, somebody will come along and scan it and then they can just take. One click and get to the, get to the forms.
That's perfect.
Um, so we're gonna, we're gonna post this once it gets a little nicer out. QR code.
We've yet to have like major, we've yet to have a major conflict. I can just see it's gonna happen one day, though.
Yeah.
You know, someone's down there and then someone shows up.
Doctor serves her wedding there. Ooh, I think she would say no.
We need three porta potties.
All handicapped.
Yeah.
Because she's gonna have to get dressed in one of them.
Need that train, you gotta get that train, you know?
I'm getting it all. She's killing this game. Just free of suggesting it, I think that'd be.
Um, I'm having a meeting with Jay O'Keefe from Mansfield Parks and Rec and Sherry from Ashford Parks and Rec, and we're gonna talk about the field use for Wham! United Soccer and Mansfield-Ashford Little League. Um, so I'm gonna try and get more Little League games at River Road.
That's great.
Past, and then, um, I'll have to see what he's looking at for Wham! Soccer, because Northeast United, they're starting up in March. Um, so I'll see what he's looking at and make sure that no dates collide, but we'll get some more use, um, with baseball and soccer over there.
Be fun to see baseball played down there again.
Yeah.
Should find a way to put a sign up like the day before, baseball in the park tomorrow or something.
Yeah, I do want to do, if anybody hits a homerun and gets it on the bocce court, they get, they get something, so.
Has to land and stay in the bocce court. Exactly.
So I got, I went to the, it was the last instructional basketball prac- practice for the. for the young kids Saturday and I spoke with a parent and, and we're gonna try and do some type of summer program at the park for the little kids, if it's a, you know, skill dribbling and all, can those rims get lowered or are they?
I think they're fixed.
They're fixed at ten.
But they used to have something at all school where you'd put this basket on the basket?
Yes, yep.
And lower that, I don't see why you couldn't just bring those down there.
Do that there, perfect.
Talk to Phil, maybe, or.
Yeah, do they, do they still use them at all schools?
Yeah, we use those for instruction, I just wasn't sure if they could be fixed outside, so I'll, I'll get in touch with Steve and see what he thinks, but definitely, I've been thinking Mondays in the summer for a month session, you know, one session, easy way to, to, to bring some money in because the, from, from what I'm hearing from the instructor, all the kids had a great time, they, they loved it, I, they were all getting their little medals on, on Saturday.
Yeah, anything we can do to get them out there, get some sunburns.
You can probably also get some of those portable hoops, you know, maybe go cross court on two of those?
Yeah, yeah, because the long, the long way's a long way.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, they still be playing half court or whatnot, but that, I, I don't know how much those cost, are those expensive? Same on the side of the road all the time, people abandoning them, you know, you get the base that you fill with sand?
Yeah, probably.
Usually adjustable.
Those are usually adjustable, right?
Yeah. Probably the guess, probably less than a hundred.
No, 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 brand new?
Brand new, what?
You mean those things where you fill with, you're supposed to fill with water or something or sand?
Yeah.
They're like, they used to be way, twenty years ago, you know, or more, they were a hundred bucks, so right now they gotta be at least two hundred.
Yeah, I'm sure they're not.
Two fifty, then you gotta put it together.
Check your swap sheet every week, there's probably.
No, I've never seen them, I don't ever see them at the town.
They usually just sit out until they're rotted and.
Right, then they're no good at that point, so.
Are we crazy to think that ultimately we do a couple of more poles and baskets there?
In the same court?
Yeah, not on the ends, on the sides.
I don't know you need it, I mean.
Well, if this gets popular.
If we're gonna run, yeah, instructional there all the time, that's a long court to run instructional.
Well, if we, if it goes half court. Structural there, why wouldn't you do it at all school?
Some, summertime outdoor.
In the summer?
Yeah, in the summer, like when it's a hundred degrees out, why wouldn't you do it?
It's good for it.
I don't know, I think it'd be better, my, my.
When is summer camp?
Summer camp, well, I don't have my calendar.
Just approximately.
July, July and August.
Yeah, exactly.
So in June you could do, in June you could do the indoor instructional? You got bathrooms, well.
Yeah, you got all that stuff.
Well, you also gotta ask the school to let you do it.
They'll let us do it.
They should.
Yeah, you used to have to beg for everything, but now, you know.
But it's Saturdays again and a janitor on a Saturday and that whole thing, so yeah, ask. I still don't think it would be a bad idea to do some outdoor there for kids and maybe get a couple of those portable hoops. I don't know where we would put them, we could put them at the shed or.
Depending on weather, too.
Yeah, but moving those around, it's not easy.
Yeah, agreed.
Talk about, it's, you can't move those things, once you, you fill with sand, you're not moving it.
Yeah, you'd have to do, you, your best bet would be water so you could irrigate it.
And then you gotta, okay, you also have a liability issue, those things aren't installed properly or done properly, if someone grabs the rim and it comes down, we've got problems, so.
Now you're back to your short rims hanging off the basketball hoops.
Yeah, I like the June idea, though, I'll run that by Phil.
It depends on the participation level, too, if there's, if there's fifty kids, you're gonna need more than two hoops.
Yeah.
If there's only ten.
Right.
Two hoops are sufficient.
Well, that's just why all school's a great place to do it, cuz you have all those rims.
Yeah.
You got the floor, minimum.
You got bathrooms.
Yeah.
If it's like a hundred degrees out and the sun's blazing, you can't be sitting out there when there's no, there's no shade and you're gonna be out in the sun on the pavement, forget it, I, I think it's, you're better off being, you know, indoors, but anyway.
Indoor, perfect, what's next, so the bus trip, the St. Patrick's Day bus trip is good to go, March seventeenth in Boston. Prices eighty dollars, includes transportation to the parade, so that's being promoted now. That's Wellington's trip for the town consortium, I guess, and we're good for the rest of the year, Jay, I know we're doing James Taylor again, I think Bolton is looking to do Salem, Mass. in October. I think Bronx Zoo's a possibility for one of the other towns, but originally I was thinking Bruins game, but the prices are, are bad, so I'm, we're working with a bus company to do the, the trip to St. Patrick's Day, and what's nice about that is instead of having to meet a ticket requirement, since there's no tickets to the parade, we don't have to worry about getting a minimum, so we'll be able to just, whoever we get, go, we won't have to cancel, so that's nice.
Oh, cool.
So started preparing for spring and summer camp, I'm gonna be meeting with the previous camp director, hopefully next couple of weeks to plan out some ideas, so. So that's looking good, I got a lot of good feedback from this year's camp, I think a lot of the parents were on the fence. And, and I've heard that a lot of kids had a good time, so hopefully a lot, we'll, we'll get the same amount of participation. And ARPA, the ARPA money's changing, so I believe it's going back to two hundred dollars a week, so that might have an effect on how many kids we get, but I'm hoping based on word of mouth from last year, we'll still get a solid amount.
It was fifty percent discount, right, before?
This year, yeah, and then it's going, I think it's gonna be twenty-five this year.
Oh, there's still some ARPA money attached to it?
Yeah, not, not a ton, no, but it, it'll be a small discount.
Yeah, that's better than nothing.
Yeah. So Chris and I, we're starting to fundraise for the concert series, we have three performers locked in right now. And then I'm working to, to stay within the, the budget of them out for the last three. Bruce Johns back, which is awesome, he draws a big crowd, and the Rock Solid Alibi, which was the first concert last year, had to cancel because of rain, we weren't able to reschedule, but we have them coming back this year, so.
So we're gonna do them in July and August?
Yeah, yeah, pushed it back, first one July tenth and then seventeen, twenty-four.
Oh, that's fine.
Onwards, I did go back, I know Alan didn't like having to go from summer camp to the concerts, so that's why he moved it up, but that's fine with me, move it back, and I think that the parents liked who brought their kids, this is last day of summer, you know, we're wrapping up, back to school and they liked where it ended right before the back to school, so we're gonna go back to that time. And I did connect with Lance Leidman, who Stu got me in touch with, and he's looking, so he's more with the Stafford Little League, which I guess accepts all Wellington residents compared to Mansfield, who only accepts north of seventy-four. So we're, I'm gonna work with Lance to see how Stafford does things and he's gonna put me in touch with some Stafford people and I'll talk to them, but I think that's a good first step to bringing everybody back once I learn about Stafford and Mansfield.
Yeah, they have a great Little League program in Stafford.
Yeah, maybe by somewhere along the line, you gotta follow the Little League rules and have a boundary, right?
Yeah.
I, I can't, one kid can't live in two different leagues, so.
It's confusing, I'm trying, we're, we're.
Which is fine for the regular season, but once you get to the playoffs, tournaments.
Yeah. And last thing, bas- basketball, youth basketball's going well, no complaints with fans, as far as I know, I know there was some difficulty last year, but or the year before, but knock, knock on wood, everything's good so far.
Yeah, that's great.
And we are, Wellington's not hosting the youth playoffs this year, I don't know if they just rotate things or they're taking it easy on me cuz I'm new, but we're not, we're not hosting, it's all the other towns. So less, less ref, ref expenses for us, which is nice.
Oh, that's good.
And I think that is it for me.
You had plenty of coaches this year?
It came down to the wire, but I, I think next year I won't have to coach, which, I mean, I love doing it, it's nice, but it's, it's, you know.
Yeah, it's more things for you to do.
But I think next year we'll, we'll be able to have.
You know, on the, you're talking about basketball?
Yes.
Yeah, I know you had trouble finding coaches, right, and, and what happened when I, when I signed, when we signed our kids up? Who was Glenn was doing with the, was, he just, he just said, you're a coach, and that's it, and I'm gonna be honest with you, I knew nothing about basketball cuz I didn't play it growing up, I played baseball and that was it, and other things, but and, and you know, I mean, thankfully, Joe helped me one, couple, two years and, and Mike here, thank, saved the day by, by helping me cuz his son was also on the team, but what I'm saying is I think sometimes, don't hesitate, and I know you're just starting, you know, to, to say, announce, okay, you're the coach, guess what you're, and just, you just kind of you kind of drag them into it, and of course, that brings those people into the whole, you know, Hark and Rec program thing, they get more involved, they realize, okay, it's not, it's actually fun, I mean, I did enjoy it.
Yeah.
And you get to meet a lot of people and stuff like that, all I'm saying is, that's how I became a coach when I knew nothing about basketball, I mean, honestly, and.
You're coaching, go to the state police parus and get finger printed.
Yeah, whatever, so, so, but I think that's what I just, you know, you might wanna consider that next time around.
And I think the two dads who've been, who've been helping me, they're trying to practice, I think they, that's what happened with them.
Yeah.
Found out, they really enjoyed it.
Right.
I think if I gave it up right now, they'd be more than happy to, to come and take a look.
Like next year, it's your coach, you're a coach, you know.
It's not as scary as you think, once you were, once you're there, running, but.
The kids know plenty, too, generally. The hard part is keeping them off the court.
Well, of course, when we did it, we didn't have the rules where everybody had to play equally, which I, it's actually a good thing, but.
We played kids pretty equally at the.
We did, we did.
I actually kept a chart with minutes and tried to keep everybody on the court.
Yeah, anyway, all right, good.
Yeah, that's great, the best, the best part about basketball is no incidents at the games.
Yes.
I wonder what the difference is?
COVID, I don't know.
I, I, Alan, I think had inserted last year, towards the end of last year, a spectator policy, so I'm thinking a lot of people might have seen that and.
Yeah.
A wording.
Didn't we have somebody going to the games as like a referee for the crowd?
We were, we were paying somebody to be at the, each game, weren't we, we're not doing that anymore?
No, beside, normally I'll show up or Chris, Chris will adjust the schedule.
At one point, we had a guy who was going to the games.
I thought, I thought so, too, at, at all games.
We do have a coordinator who we're paying to do like the scoreboard and stuff and I guess she.
She spends a day or he spends a day at the.
Yeah, she runs, she runs the, the scoreboard for all the games, yeah, so that might be who you're thinking of, but she hasn't had to, you know, kick anybody out or yell at anybody.
That's good.
Yeah, which is good.
Remember when our kids played, everybody, all the kids were dying to keep the score.
Yeah.
They all wanted to do something.
I remember when Mike Portello was reffing and he teed up one of the Mansfield bombs for, out the mouth.
It was hilarious.
Who won the fight?
He was short, too.
He's having a baby? Well, she is. All right.
Jack has a couple, right?
Yeah, one on the way, I think. One, one's coming.
So I think that's all I have, the, the short in between kind of ruined all, all the stuff that I had planned that I said last at the special meeting, but hopefully more good news next, next time.
No, this is all good news, too.
And you're still enjoying the job?
Oh, yeah.
That's good.
So, so far, so good.
Good. All right. Anything else, fellers? Thank you all for coming.
Yeah.
Thank you, Bill, for coming. If we're good, we could adjourn, someone wanna make a motion?
Shall we adjourn?
Second.
Wait on.
All right.
Need help clean it up?
Thanks, Bill.
See you, Bill.